Yes, would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Jacobson?
Here.
Ms. Ammons?
Here.
Ms. Marlin?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Smythe?
Here.
Mr. Madigan?
Here.
Mayor Pressing?
Okay, first I'd like to ask the committees of indulgence to move, rearrange a few things. Item number seventeen, the Carl tax update has already been done, so that can be removed. And then, I'd like to put the discussion on social service funding to follow the discussion of the budget, as one of our members will be recusing herself, and it works out a little more conveniently that way.
Charlie, a motion?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we rearrange the budget as indicated.
Moved and seconded, moved by Dennis, seconded by Diane. Is there further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, okay, rearranged. Okay, so next up is discussion of the budget overview. I believe the mayor and Bill are going to take us through this. And everybody?
Yeah, I'll just give you the summary, which I think you're all kind of familiar with the big picture. If you look at the document, you'll see that we have a decrease in the operating budget. Essentially, the department budgets are the same as they were this year. We don't have the funding for any increases. We do have a big increase in what we're spending on capital projects, so that looks like, it makes the whole budget look like it's 25 percent bigger, but that is not a continuing thing. These are large projects that have been planned years in advance. We've got the money arranged, and now it's all coming together. We've gotten some very good bids on these projects, so we're getting good value. The big surprise was the extra $360,000 that Carl Hospital got taken off the tax rolls. And I think I've been over with you with this for quite a bit now. The overall decrease in our assessed valuation is 11 percent of our total, by taking Carl off. And we have other sources of revenue which, over time, theoretically could make up for that, but the reality is that an 11 percent cut in the assessed value of Urbana raises the tax rates, not only for the city, but for the park district, and especially the school district, and every other district that has Urbana territory in its taxing assessed value. So that has a very harmful long-term effect on the city, that it makes us be uncompetitive over time. So we are going to have to act on this, and we went to Springfield, Mike Munson and I, and Fred Grosser, our attorney, and there is strong feeling that the law that was passed by the legislature last year is unconstitutional. So we're going to try to approach this with a legislative approach to fix the Urbana problem, because I think we were probably the hardest hit of any city in the state. We have, as I've said, 3 percent of the total population of the region that Carl serves, but 83 percent of the property that they're getting exempted for. So I'll turn it over to Bill DeJarnett for his overview.
Thank you, Mayor. Let me bring this up real quick. This is a novel for me. I'm usually not up this early, you guys. I don't get to talk to you guys till like 11 or 12, so take me a second to get this thing. So you'll be able to go half-speed? Hmm? All right. This is part of what I was going to present, so it's generally a quick overview, and then we can get into some more detail and talk about the process of what we want to do. I'm going to go over an overview of changes, where we are, some areas of interest, and a quick summary. We start with an unbalanced budget of about two and a half million. We have a predicted unspend of about a million four. That's consistent with what we do, about a 96 percent spend rate, about a 4 percent unspend. That is obviously under pressure. The carryover from last year, the $500,000, that's also under pressure, meaning that it's harder and harder to maintain that 4 percent unspent. We had a stormwater transfer of $500,000, and then the usual cost-saving measures will percolate, which would be a slow fill of a position, or something like that, that will buy a little time, and buy a little money, or we'll be a little over on our revenue, or under on our revenue projection. So, major changes, there are none. No change in departmental expenditures, except to meet ongoing obligations. That would be mostly increases for insurance. The increase in the cycle fee, after our discussion, our last discussion, went up 25 cents, from $30 to $33 a year. That will be sufficient to keep the fund from going underwater, and will continue to provide for the leaf pickup. Stormwater goes into effect this year. That'll bring in a million one. Major capital improvements, the Boneyard, Olympian, Windsor, you're looking at about 20 million there, and of course, the ever-popular real estate tax drop. Trends in fund balances. What I wanted you to see here is the fact that we are, with these capital projects as an example, and just our overall process, we are consuming our fund balances. It's neither good nor bad. It's a process. Right now, the capital projects are all coming to fruition, so we're getting a lot of bang for our buck, but we will not be able to keep this up forever. A couple of years out, a number of these funds are going to be operating on whatever grants we can get. Motor fuel tax revenues is decreasing every year, so those things are going to come at us pretty hard and fast in a couple of years. Three ways to control our destiny. Obviously, the stool has three legs. More revenue, the burden should reside on the correct shoulders. More efficient, do more with less. Eventually, you run out of efficient, you can only squeeze things so hard. And then just do less. Make sure the service is provided, or the services are needed and wanted for the price paid. I'm going to go into some areas of interest. The continued drop in assessed valuation, rising costs of health insurance, rising payroll costs, declining motor fuel tax revenues, decrease in state/federal assistance, ongoing payment of library operating costs, and the maintaining levels of service. Continued drop in assessed valuation. We can attack this a number of ways. Increase economic development, create pilot agreements, lobby for fair legislation, and annex. Those are all revenue-type generators. Some of those are fairly long-term process. Those don't happen overnight. Rising costs of health insurance. Our expected increase for this fiscal year is 15 percent, approximately $300,000, $340,000, depends on how this shakes out. Ways to deal with that are to add tiers to provide more options, avoid Cadillac Plan penalties. We have an outstanding plan here. In the future, it may be considered at the Cadillac Plan level. With that, we'll come out of taxes, or we reduce the level of benefits the city fully funds. Now, I'm going to go through a number of things. Yes, ma'am?
Who is our provider, and do we have options for changing providers?
Well, I'm glad you asked that question. Do you want to start, Mayor, or shall I?
Well, $300,000 increase when they cut our assessed value by an additional $360,000. So yes, it is Health Alliance, right across the street, a Carl subsidiary.
So, obviously, those are some of the issues, is to explore options. You know, these are the same kind of changes. I mean, there are a number of organizations that provide it, but changes in service is difficult for an organization to make that change immediately, but those are things that need to be looked at. Obviously, the tiers are another example of that. There are some opportunities to self-insure pieces of this, to take advantage of that. As you know, we do that now with the workers' comp. So there's a lot of aspects to this, to try to get back, to get some of this money back. But yes, Health Alliance, right now, currently provides it, and currently pulls about $2 million dollars a year out of this organization. General fund budget percentages. In case we didn't know it already, clearly, we're all about people. We put boots on the street. 80 percent is personnel-related, personnel and personnel-related services. Rising payroll costs. We're payroll, all right? 24 million of the 30 in the general, flowing through the general fund. If we're, to make some changes in effects, now, I'm going to go through a number of things. These are not good or bad. These are just ways to deal with these things. These are, some carry some emotional baggage, there's lots of stuff with this, but I don't even support some of these. But the reality is, is these are how you get at these numbers. Change the culture of overtime. That usually involves some version of do less. As positions come open, review for ways to restructure. Eliminate jobs, combine jobs, look at part-time jobs, efficiency. Offer work week, workplace alternatives, such as a 32-hour work week with a corresponding reduction in pay, another version of do less. Matter of fact, Naperville dropped staffing 13 percent from 2008 to 2011, or maintained the 2011 level, as we heard talked about again just lately. Champaign and the police department alone cut six sworn and five civilian. We've been able to avoid draconian cuts of this nature. I think that's because you organizationally have understood the value of your staff, the cost to retrain. There's no reason for us to have to do that. We do have to be smart about what we do. Declining motor fuel tax revenues. One of the ways to deal with this is to redefine acceptable standards, learn to like a different level of a street. Find ways to charge impact users weight-class fees. Examine alternate funding sources. Registration fees, very difficult in a college town to actually implement. Our rate increases. With rate increases, such as the local motor fuel tax, you know, you continue to go at that same group of people.
I'm sorry, can you?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
Can you just go back for a second, and just from the previous slide? I don't have a picture of what redefine acceptable standards mean. What does that mean?
Well, I guess I would go back way into my past. When I grew up, the street I grew up on didn't have curbs, didn't have gutters. It was a little bumpy, but still is a good street, I got home. So it comes to about where you prioritize, where you put your money, which are the streets. You know, it's a change in what is the level of acceptable streets, so.
So can I ask you a follow-up, then? On the previous slide, you talked about 80 percent of the revenue is to staffing. Has there been a review of staffing as to whether we're top-heavy at all? Have we been able to combine some positions over the last year or so? I think that's a very high number for most of the revenue to go to staffing, and then tell the public to do less, and bumpy streets.
Staffing is, we're holding, and hopefully I'll get into a little bit of that. We're holding department meetings quite frequently, and that's part of what I'm going to get into. Staffing is obviously the fastest way to make a dramatic change in an organization such as a city. Public Works has looked, made a, has combined three positions to two. This is important to us. This is clearly, this is clearly one of the ways we get at it, but how we get at it, I think, will also be very important. That's going to go into that issue of defining what we do, and what we do less of. Less people, less boots on the street, means certain things will not be dealt with in the same manner. Not necessarily bad, or worse, but redefining how we do business, and how to best do that business will affect staff, absolutely.
And I've got a question, too.
I would like to say that if you compare our salaries with our neighbor, Champaign, we have lower salaries.
Well, I just want to-
You know, I think the nature of a city is that it's people providing the services, so I don't think you should be concerned about the 80 percent being part of the total.
Well, I guess I am concerned about the 80 percent in respect to losing so much from the Carl, and the impact will be maybe next year, as opposed to this year. And I'm also concerned about, often, we are top-heavy organizations, and we have to also face that as well, and make sure that we're not running positions just because we can, and how we can combine those, because the real effect of that shouldn't be shifted strictly to the people who've been paying it, the motor fuel tax, over and over again. And I think we need to also look internally as well.
Well, I think you're right. I think this is a question that really boils down to, are people paying their fair share of taxes? And when you have, you know, the biggest taxpayer in your area, suddenly getting the right to not pay taxes, that has a significant impact. And so that's what has to be changed.
I hope that is the answer. I do.
And I've got a question for this slide.
Yes, sir. This slide or the next one?
The one you have on right now.
Okay, excellent.
So you've got the suggestion of alternative work week hours, 32 hours a week. So that would be a reevaluation of employee hours, and maybe job assignment, or maybe condensation of time and scheduling. It would also, would this also change them from being full-time to three-quarter time?
No, it would not. 32 hours would not drop them to a part-time status.
What would drop them to a three-quarter time status?
It's a fairly traumatic drop. It's more like into the 25-hour range, to get below that. The goal here is, this is an example of a win-win methodology that takes time to figure out, put in place, and potentially offer. This is one of those scenarios by which you look for people that are interested in doing that for their own personal benefit. For us, you know, it's, a number of people do that. You don't have, you know, you create some flexibility, and also it allows some people that have outstanding skill sets, but may not be able to work 40 hours, but they would bring a lot to the plate without having to pay that full-time salary.
So this could potentially appeal to people who have families, and they have requirements to, you know, be at home at certain times, and they'd rather than perhaps get, hire a babysitter, or, you know, have their children dropped off at a certain service center, you know, to take care of them for the three or four hours that they can't be home. There are options here that might be appealing to people.
Yes, and I'd like to comment on Naperville dropping staffing 13 percent. Naperville is a very wealthy community, and I don't think Urbana has the, you know, the ability to drop staff 13 percent without really affecting services that people rely on.
The other issue, the 32 hours, I'm sorry, yes, ma'am?
Well, you can go ahead.
Well, I was just going to say, the other issue of the 32 hours, as an example of a scenario, is it's a soft benefit, that it's hard for somebody to value when they're looking at from one job to another, and it raises our competitiveness by providing something that maybe in other organizations really don't have the flexibility or the willingness to do that. So it does, it allows us to be competitive with our neighbor who frankly pays more, but nonetheless may not be, may be unwilling to create that level of flexibility.
Yes, ma'am.
Looking at the overtime, there's-
Well, yeah.
There's different levels of overtime, and are we talking about the overtime for maybe snowplow drivers, or overtime for extra officers on the street for a few months? Or are we talking about the built-in overtime in the fire department, which is close to something like $400,000 a year? And that's, I think, related to minimum staffing. I mean, what are we looking at?
The overtime is just a good example of, that's something that we process, about $800,000 in a year. Fire is budgeted at $400,000, they're under budget, but it is a process that, in many organizations, overtime is used to fend off creating another full-time position. In other words, I don't hire that full-time position. Well, we'll work it with overtime and get it to rebalance. Over time, it's difficult to leverage that back out and to attack that, because so many things are built around that process, because that is the solution. Council wants more, you know, more enforcement at a certain area? Well, it's overtime, unless somebody comes back and says, "Well, all right, it won't be overtime, but these are the four things that no longer happen the way they currently happen." So those are changes, those are trade-offs. Overtime is that fixer that makes short-term fixes. The problem is, if that is the process to maintain a long-term solution, then you're paying time and a half for a long-term solution, when it needs to be rebalanced. So that's just an example of an area that you have to look at, and you have to continue to look at, because it is difficult to change that. I think the old joke was, if Captain America knew he wouldn't get overtime, he'd have never left being Sergeant America. Yes, sir?
But is it not true that a certain number of hours of overtime is actually cheaper in total cost to the city than creating new positions that cover that many hours?
Well, I think that goes to Ms. Ammons' point. That is, that is the analysis you have to consistently and continually look at and rebalance. At what point in time, to create a level of service, is your most efficient way to do that. Sometimes it's more people, sometimes it's a shift, sometimes it's not doing something because it doesn't fit well. I think one of our goals is to make sure that you clearly have that information, so that you understand what the trade-offs are, so that you can make the best decision as to how we fill and fulfill those needs. But yes, you're absolutely right. Sometimes that is absolutely, and in the short term, that clearly is. The cost to train somebody new for a short-term process is very, very expensive. But on the other hand, if that's what we want, and that's our expectation, then we have to change and look at how, you know, look at how we want to deal with that. All right, we've seen this one, all very positive, but the reality is, is these revenues are decreasing, as you know. You passed a local. Yeah, this one's the state one. We passed a local one, and it's also declining. But they're tied to the exact same revenue source. Let me go back real quickly. Nah, let's not. All right, decrease in state/federal assistance. Find new partners, all right? What the feds can't do, what the states won't do, we may have local partners that very much would like to be more specifically involved and help with that. That's, a lack of a better term, a marketing process, that's an inclusion process, but there may be partners out there, such as Carl, who would love to get involved with helping us take care of this.
The State Farm Civic Center.
There you go. And then there's always the less popular reduced program scope. Obviously, that's the do-less piece. With that, you have to prioritize your goals, and then redefine your successes. Yes, sir?
Yeah, I actually like that, find new partners, and I think that could be fleshed out a little bit more, as far as marketing. And we've, we're kind of finishing up some projects, and maybe the people that were working on those engineering projects could direct their engineering skills toward proposals that involve engineering skills, and I'd like to see that worked out more. And I'd like to visualize the increased revenue, other than taxes, as much as we're visualizing the cuts. I think just in my mind, it would be healthier. Then I wanted to go back a few pages to the stormwater amount. I think it was 1.1 million. I know originally it was like 1.7 million, and then back in September, they came back and said, "Oops, we miscalculated."
We're not collecting a full year's worth this year.
Okay.
That's the only difference. Otherwise, it'd be about the 1.4.
1.4 is still the current number. Okay. And is that including all the incentives? Have those been calculated?
I'm sorry, all the-
The incentives and credits?
Should be. I mean, it should be included.
That's included.
It's in the budget, should be the complete number.
Thanks.
All right, and this is an interesting topic, and like I said, a number of these are neither good nor bad, but they're interesting to talk about. Ongoing payment of library operating costs. Transition to the library, the $380,000 in library payroll costs that the city pays annually. Champaign divested themselves of this expenditure about 10 years ago. The other topic would be, have the library cover their own major repairs and capital expenditures through systematic savings. Currently, in this year's budget, we have $160,000 in expenditures for them, and then a one-timer, which would be have the library cover their share of the reduced levy for the Carl effect. So anyway, like I said, these are interesting things, and the library will specifically have comments on these, as the Champaign library did. But nonetheless, you know, these are, part of my goal, and if you go back to the very first slide, is, I think it's important for people to understand what's being paid for, and I believe that when you look at the real estate tax bill, and you see the library's levy, you tend to think that's what it costs to operate the library. Well, it's not. There's these expenses that the city pays, and comes through our side. My contention is, is I have no problem with the library levying that higher amount, but I would like the levy to reflect what it does cost to run the library. Maintaining level of services. Define who we are and why we are. Define our core services. Prioritize delivery. Redefine the base. We don't, don't just hang on, we need a future proof. These last couple, three years, we've been hanging on. We've been waiting for our revenues to magically come back. We've been waiting for a lot of other things to smooth out. I think we need to clearly look at where we're at, and while this budget does an outstanding job of giving us another year to figure that out, starting July 1, after we pass this budget, July 1, we need to clearly start thinking about that next year. We need to get ahead of that, we need to understand it, but we need to be nimble, just to changes in the landscape. An example would be, Champaign has talked about, has floated this a few times in the newspaper, possible sales tax increase. Well, there's only a couple of windows to do that. If you were interested in doing that along with them, we would want to act fairly quickly, because we'd have to let the state know in September, so that that would be available January 1. My contention is, no new expenses without a revenue source or a corresponding cut. We're not in bad shape, but we really can't take a step backwards. We need to take a step forwards. If you look at what we've done, we've burned our last little bit of process, we've raised another revenue this year, just like last year. Maybe this sales tax is another revenue for next year, but the reality is, is we need to look forward. And like I said, this budget is not our, this current budget, year's budget, is not our problem. But we do want, we do want to take this time that this budget buys us, and clearly position ourselves for the future. Summary. We get through this year in a similar manner as last year, burn down the last year of our carryover, create a new revenue source. Before this coming fiscal year's over, we need to begin to make far more telling decisions. Urbana is a vibrant, unique community that provides outstanding services with employees that are committed. We need to make sure we continue to be forward-thinking, and do that, which is our essence, and excel at that. We should let no one define us but ourselves. We are Urbana.
Do we have additional questions for Coach DeJarnett here? Start with Eric, and we'll work our way around.
Something that, I guess Charlie was the first person who mentioned this in a one-on-one conversation, but is there any possibility of turning some things that we pay property, that we pay for out of property tax revenue or general revenue into fees? Because tax-exempt bodies are not exempt from fees. For example, the stormwater fee. That is applied to tax-exempt bodies as well. I mean, Carl gets police protection, Carl gets fire protection, and Carl gets the benefit of being connected to our Public Works.
And I'll let the mayor answer.
Yeah, let me just say that we could possibly get some revenue, but that doesn't really deal with the underlying problem of the property tax rates going up. That's what is the really harmful thing about this, but there are things that we can do, and the ever-inventive Bill DeJarnett has some thoughts.
Yes, I was thinking of moving some of these expenditures for fire, police, protection, public works, from being paid for by property taxes to being paid for by fees.
Well, clearly, if you look at over the years, that was one of the things that the cities have done, literally over the decades, is learn to reduce that dependence on property taxes. Try to get the fees, the running litany for that was, of course, the right person paying the right fee for the right thing. And the cities were very interested in that, and like most things, pressure makes creativity. So we will continue to look at those issues. We're not, you know, clearly, and we're not the only city that has had difficulties and issues, so there are a number of other organizations that hopefully help us, you know, look through these. But we've been pretty, and I don't even want to say creative, we've been trying to be appropriate and well-balanced in what we've done. It's not about shifting a burden, it's about creating a balanced burden that is more manageable to handle. It's like carrying one bucket of water is much more difficult to carry than two buckets of water, even though you're carrying more weight. So a balance on a community is appropriate, and it is fair, and I think that's mostly what people have an expectation of, is fairness.
Dennis?
We're going to be approaching negotiations with a couple of unions for services and work in the community in the near future, and, I mean, during these years ahead, and that's going to be a difficult thing to integrate into, you know, the new budgets of the future. We have no real control over maybe some of the outcomes of that. I mean, we hope to guide and, you know, negotiate well, but if we find that our personnel costs continue to rise, how can the city really balance that? Is that going to be just yet again, another very difficult adjustment for this community?
Well, you know, it's obviously a little bit on the Pollyanna side, but your expectation is, is it's not so much a negotiation as a collaboration. You have an expectation that these people that you work with every day, day in, day out, have an understanding of the goals of the city, the realities of operating the city, and where they fit into the picture. If they do that, then this negotiation does become a fairly positive process. Nonetheless- Nonetheless, finding more revenues at an increasing rate is difficult, and when you're at 80%, 2% on top of 80% is a big number to meet. The estimation has been in the past somewhere between $160,000, $180,000 per 1% increase. So where do you find that? Well, it's not the problem of finding that one, it's the fact that that becomes the new line in the sand, and then everything builds on top of that again. So getting that imbalance means that if that continues to rise, to do the exact same job, that pressure pushes somewhere else, and you get a loss of service somewhere else. There's something you're not going to do anymore.
And as far as the, the more creative aspect that you suggested, that, you know, it's important for Urbana to define itself, and we have to have a clear idea of our goals. What vehicle will assist us in clearly stating goals or re-stating our goals? And is this going to be something that comes from the mayor and the city council's goal, discussion of council goals, or is this going to come from, you know, a larger dialogue?
Well, I think it's the responsibility of the mayor and council to set the goals, but we have input from the staff. You know, we, we have to know what things cost and whether it can be done with the existing staff, so it has, it has been an interchange always, but I think that is our responsibility, the vision for the future of Urbana. And we also open it up to the public, so.
Mike, did you want to jump in?
Oh, no. Okay. I'll just make a couple of quick comments. Going back to Eric's comment about, you know, user fee type things protects the city, it doesn't take care of the overall picture, which is the school district, the park district, the other taxing bodies that are being impacted by this. So we can probably figure out a way to cover ourselves, but we need to look at those entities that are basically property tax-driven.
And that cover will be short-term. I mean, you know, that, we can cover that for the short-term, but if dramatically affects our real estate tax base, then in the long-term, it impacts our ability to, for economic development.
Right, yeah, it's just, it's a negative spiral, yeah. And then the other point, and I get back to the argument I've made earlier, is when we do percent increases, we're messing with compound interest issues and the rich get richer. And so we really need to look at increases that are flat rates, that don't come back and just keep increasing gaps between the bottom and the top. And, you know, to me, that's a problem across the way we think societally. Somebody needs to start with that, and I think you all know how I feel on that. Okay, Dennis, then Diane.
Sorry, Diane, I have one more. On page 29 of the city budget, the revenue analyst, I'm just going to show you here, I'll hold it up. There is the pie chart that shows the breakdown of the property tax incomes. Is that rigid and an unmovable reality based on state law, federal law, or county law?
That's how it has developed, would be lack of a better term, over time. There, obviously, there are limitations and there's some rules, but we're home rule, so we can adjust that pie dramatically, we just never have.
And is it time to maybe consider the pie breakup or the pie divisions?
What, what you see is the basis, is based on state law. There's a school aid formula, and schools are financed by property tax locally, and they get some school aid, but it's mostly local property tax. So, you know, Parkland is a huge region, and it's relatively small in this pie, but the park district is also totally property tax, pretty much totally property tax.
And is that because that's how it's evolved here in our community, or?
No, that's state law. All these districts are created by state statute, and that's how they operate.
Diane?
Couple of comments. One is, I think a lot of our problems would be less problematical if we had, if our per capita sales tax were anywhere near what our neighboring communities were, so it's important for us to try to focus on that. But, and again, that's tied to property tax. If our property tax rates are unsustainable, we're not going to attract the residents or the businesses to operate here in Urbana. So it all goes back to this effect on our property taxes. The other thing is, when I started going through the budget, a lot of my questions seemed to focus on facilities and like, why are we doing what we're doing, including things like the civic center and the parking deck? And a few years ago, we had talked about facilities planning for the future, and I don't see anything in the budget for that, but I really think part of this overall look at what we're doing, we ought to have a real facilities plan or start doing that and, and looking at the way we're using everything we have and what we, what our actual needs are best that we can determine. So is there a plan for a facilities plan?
There is a plan for a facilities plan, there is no budget for a facilities plan. We understand that we need one, but, you know, it would cost $100,000. Where are we going to get that money? So that's what the problem has been, but I agree with you, we need a plan.
Could that be one of the things we look for for next year?
Absolutely, and I'll, I can address it, I'll address that and the other two items. The civic, department heads have been holding some meetings, we've been going through issues. The civic center is an example of something that is percolated to the top and has some, options are being evaluated. So our goal will be to come back into this next year fairly quickly. To talk about civic center will be a good example. I'm building a large plan about parking, it'll involve the deck, it'll involve impacts into some neighborhood parking, rates, rebalancing the whole thing. There's, there's strengths and weaknesses of what we do, and we need to relook at how we, how we appraise that. So we, that's going to be a large process, but well, well worth doing. I think that will generate some revenue and it'll also obtain some good balances for services provided. The facilities plan has value, but my contention at this point in time is, is I think organizationally, we need to go through the process ourselves of making sure we clearly understand what our needs are. I feel that if we don't, if we haven't spent the time, bringing in a consultant too early in that process tends to give you a boilerplate. It's, it's an outstanding document, but they might as well just cross the other city's name out and put yours in. We need to be able to clearly define our understanding of how we want to do business, where we need to have buildings, what kind of buildings and what kind of services we need to provide to the community. And at that point in time, then a consultant can come in and help us figure out how we put that all together and then maximize our value. That takes time, but that's, I think that's well worth doing, and then like I said, when we spend the money, it'll be well spent. But there's no money set aside for that now, but it has value.
So we have an epilogue here that you want to talk about?
Pardon?
You have an epilogue here, or is it a quick budget discussion here?
No, that's pretty much, oh, that was, that's actually the, that's the front end of the old one you guys saw. I put them all together so I had them available if I needed them. So there is your, there's your, there's your epilogue. But the, the reality is, is this year's not a problem. There's outstanding capital improvement projects going, there's a lot of real positive things going. We're covered. Next year is very important to us.
I would like to say that we do not have the money for Windsor Road. We're working on that. That's about $6 million.
Other questions for staff, for the mayor? Thank you very much. Next up is people's budget.
That's actually a good way to follow a discussion like this on budget and finance. I think something that the mayor just said is, we really need to look at ways to get others involved around this issue of budgeting. I received from a couple of actual planners from the University of Illinois who participated, as well as our Libby Tyler participated in planning conference up in Chicago recently that proposed something called participatory budgeting. And we will actually probably really need the help of the citizens in the coming year to figure out how to address some of the do less in the budget areas that will impact the citizens. And so I'll just give a little overview of what participatory budgeting is. There is a actual project called Participatory Budgeting Project. That's the actual website, which is participatorybudgeting.org. You can go to that website, and it will give you an overview of what the process is. But I'll just explain slightly here. Participatory budgeting is a different way to manage public money and to engage people in government. It is a democratic process in which community members directly decide how to spend part of a public budget. It enables taxpayers to work with government to make the budget decisions that affect their lives. And I think that what was just put forward is, certainly in the next year, we'll have to discuss issues that will impact citizens like fees and fine raising and additional taxing and things of that nature that none of us like to do. No one likes to have their taxes raised, as it has been annually since the recession. We've had to raise taxes, whether it's on the city level or the county level, that my experience has been. And this is the biggest thing that you can do for the public is to engage them in that process. The participatory budgeting process has about 1,500 cities and governments, schools use it, universities, and other public agencies have started this process that implements something of a brainstorming process very publicly. So people start about eight months out from the budgetary process. In our area, like in other cities, Vallejo, California is a very small community similar to ours. And they are actually this week in the final stages of their participatory budgeting process, where the citizens have not only come up with projects that they want addressed, but the citizens have voted on those projects so that the council in Vallejo has some direction from the public to build a budget around with staff. And so in that process, I have contacted a couple of their council members to talk about their process, how they got it started, how they got citizen engagement, which they have a great process of engaging the citizens, and it's a very broad multicultural community in Vallejo, California. And some of the things that they look at, projects that they've looked at is street repairs in that community, needs of improvement in lighting, parks and recreation, supported their library, which is one of their topics that was on their budgeting process, supporting their local community college, and other pilot projects that came out of the process of participatory budgeting in Vallejo. And so at this point, I would like for the council to, I'm not sure if the staff or the council, I'm not sure how the process should go, for us to study a way to create a system in Urbana that would look forward into the budgetary process in 14, 15, that will seriously impact our community and ultimately impact our staff too at the city of Urbana. And getting them engaged in the process at the beginning, I believe, will help us at the end to pass a budget that has support of the broader community and meets the needs and goals of the citizen. And so I would encourage our members and the citizens to, again, go to participatorybudgeting.org and look at the actual, it's a nonprofit organization that actually comes and helps cities and municipalities basically set up a process that fits the needs of your community as opposed to some other community.
Dennis?
Yeah, this is a, you know, a very interesting proposal, Carol, and I appreciate your, you know, bringing it forward. You know, and do you see this as being basically an advisory experience from the public and the participants? And I can see that probably the, the subjects that might come up from community, depending on who participates actively, could be, you know, very different in direction from the overview held by staff and city administration. How do these things merge in your mind, or was the experience there? And how does this relate to the process that the county went through about seven years ago? Big, small, all, which was also, you know, like a local kind of grassroots input experiment, which came up with a lot of suggestions that none of them seem to go anywhere?
I think that actually one of them out of that, and I came to this community at the end of that big, small, all project, but one of them actually did take root, and that was the transportation, QOTS was part of that process. So out of the, out of that big, small, all, it evolved into the transportation, the countywide transportation committee that's working on, of course, things like high-speed rail and all these types of things that's hopefully going to come about at some point. But very few of them go anywhere, because when you make it advisory as opposed to real participation, then they don't go anywhere. This process actually takes a certain amount of the budget and say to the public, we're asking for your input to A, fund social services, or B, fund parks and recreation, or whatever ideas that the public have, that they'd like the government to act upon on their behalf. And it engages their intellect in the process as opposed to allowing them to come and look at a completed budget with no actual input.
Mayor?
I believe QOTS was in existence way before big, small, all.
Oh, was it?
Yes.
Okay, I stand corrected on that.
Right.
Dennis?
Yeah, just for this conversation, it seems to me that the, the one area that did really take off and come together as a group to be a voice in the community from the big, small, all was the biking community. It seemed to me that they found a place there where their input really became vital. That's where the biking community, you know, got its, got its, got its energy. And that was like one of the few successes, but I mean, there were a lot of things concerning the regional airport question and so many other things that, that just withered away. And at the end, it was really doubtful whether the process worked. So one of the, one of the aspects that I'm curious about is the idea, and the concept is very positive. You're saying that the process as experienced in Vallejo, California, was that they actually were given a certain amount of budgeting that really was indeed to be determined by their participation. So that's quite a commitment by a city to do, and time will tell whether we're going to go down that route.
Eric?
Yeah, I'm just looking at the, at the website, and so I, to the extent that it's accurate, it probably is. I'm sure it is. The, the city council gave Participatory Budgeting Project $3.2 million out of the city's budget to, but it is advisory, the city council actually has to, has to find a way to decide.
Have to approve the final.
Or, yeah, and that's going to happen in just a little over a week, on May 28, in fact. But, but the top projects in the participatory budget vote were, number one, you'll be so surprised, potholes and street repair. Number two, lighting. Three, parks and recreation improvements. But, so actually, it, it didn't turn out to be terribly radical. On the other hand, it probably is a very good exercise, I would think. But we'll see, we'll see how it works out with them, I guess, because very soon, they're, they're going to vote on the
On which ones?
On the PB projects, and that'll be very interesting to see.
Yeah, two comments here on this, you know, another item that wasn't mentioned, the fourth or fifth item here is the school district thing. You know, with the park, you know, parks are separate, the school district is separate. We have to focus on sort of city things where that would, would work out. I would suggest that we, as soon as we can find a place in the schedule, we need to start finding some time to meet about council and mayor goals. You know, look at our old ones and get this started, and I'll, I'll turn to Mike, who helped coordinate the last round of those, and updating them to, to sort of spearhead some, some meeting times on that, because I think this definitely belongs in there. The public participation is needed in several areas like this. And then thanks, Dennis, for, for mentioning Champagne County Bikes. Big, small, all did bring the original founders of that group together. They found each other in They found each other in big, small, all. And they, you know, around Brandon and Rick Langlois and a couple others, the group formed. And that was the beginning of a local advocacy group. So, thank you. Mayor?
Yeah, I think that big, small, all was a useful exercise. I participated in it and I thought it was good to have people come and talk about these things. I don't think people can just do it over and over again, but to do it periodically, I think is very useful.
So this, in the form of process, the council will have at some point council goal meeting, of which we would, I would recommend, okay, that this be put on that process so that we can talk about that. The other thing that I learned about this, which I'm like a serious novice at it, but the interesting part to me is it brought together people across the city in the different wards in Vallejo and what the, you know, somebody in the south, southern part of Urbana and the northernmost part of Urbana get to come together and say, okay, what are the projects that are important to us across the city? And then to rank those things, ultimately allow citizens to vote on those things and then the council has something to work with that has the mandate of the people as opposed to the opposite being true where we get the taxes as a citizen, but not the input as a citizen. And I think this kind of helps to alleviate some of that. And so I'll look forward to that being part of the council goals.
I just wish we had a little more money to work with.
You know, I guess.
Yeah, I know, I know, so.
But, but some of the, oh, sorry.
Diane?
I would like the New York City council budget.
Yeah, I know, yeah, yeah, well, I was hesitant, you know, $65.5 billion and each council member has discretionary funding of $2 to $9 million, you know? But, you know, it's just, it's not, it's not conceivable, you know? Eric?
Would you also like their problems? But the, but yeah, but so, so one of the, I just, I mean, I think a lot of these things would be things we would consider, but I think the interesting thing is, you know, how a broader cross section of people, there were about 3,000 people who voted, or 4,000 people who voted on these, which, and their population is about three times ours, so that would, so if we had that proportionately, it'd be a little over 1,000. But one of the ones that came in pretty high, sixth, was intensive system of counseling high school youngsters and scholarships for college. Program that was specifically aimed at getting kids college ready, presumably who otherwise might not be.
Mayor?
I was just going to say we could probably give everybody $25.
Okay. Anything further on this and we'll, we'll look to Mike to work the goal stuff into the, into the schedule.
Well, I'll just say this because I'm going to excuse myself in a second, that even if we looked at implementing this at some point through our revenue that we do give for social service funding, that could be the process by which the public determines what that funding is for as opposed to, I like this agency or vice versa. We could open that process up and allow the public to say, do we need this college ready program or do we need this head start money so that this long waiting list can be cleared up somehow? And so that allows the public to really, even if it's just that little pool of money, to have a real participation in the process.
I would hope we could broaden it a little bit, but yeah, that is clearly one pot of money where we do have some discretion. So, anything else on this one? Okay, we'll move on to the next topic, which is a discussion of social service funding allocations. Well, no. Oh, yeah, yeah, yep, yeah. And Carol's recusing herself for the same reason she did last week, so. Okay, well, I think while you're doing that, we can actually see if, is there any staff report on this?
I had a question.
Any updates since, so just to clarify one thing, as I was going through this, Junior League has withdrawn officially, right? That's correct, from the process, as we were told last week? Switching, I think so, yeah.
Yes, then she did, I'm sorry, yes.
Okay. And then we do have one member of the public.
Could you repeat that?
I think the Junior League project has been withdrawn from the, from there. So remove that from your, your list or exit out of the, out of the spreadsheet. So, because that was a project that we, that, that fit our criteria for some of the early childhood stuff that we were looking for. So please keep that in mind. We do have one member of the public who wishes to speak now. Reverend Dr. Evelyn Underwood would like to address the council with concerns on social service funding allocation.
Reverend Dr. Evelyn Underwood, 1309 West Tremont Street in Urbana. And my concern is about youth employment for our Urbana teens. I just hope that we get some funding for our youth in these allocations. Thank you.
And we do have at least two programs that address that. Diane?
Do we have a deadline for when these allocations have to be finished?
Generally, I believe it is along with around the time that the budget is when it should be voted on. So that would be mid-June, so there's still some time for discussion.
So the council's individual allocations need to be turned in?
That would be Eric's.
Yeah, I mean, I'm certainly willing to compile the spreadsheets or Charlie, if you want to do that jointly, that's fine.
So does Diane for that matter.
I'll help, I'd be willing to help. I just need to have a deadline or I won't, you know?
Yeah, okay, so let's pick a deadline, that'd be a good idea. Okay, so we have, we have a three day Memorial Day weekend. We meet next Tuesday, by the way, since it is a federal holiday. So we, our council, our committee of the whole meeting next week will be on Tuesday at 7 o'clock. What are, you know, what kind of timeframe would you like? Would you like these, say, starting in, you know, you want to give people, say, till the end of the month and want people to turn them in by June 1?
I think that works.
June 1?
June 1 works.
Okay. June 1 or Eric will be sending you flaming emails, right?
You know what a tough guy I am.
One thing, one thing, I started playing with this today and just as a, you know, I brought up the spreadsheet and, and put this together and we have several projects that meet, you know, some of our goals, the early childhood, the youth employment issues and that sort of thing. And one thing I, one approach I took just in my first run, and I can share that with others too if they're interested, is I gave everybody the same allocation they had last year, no increases, no changes. And then I gave the, I think, three programs that meet our, our, these, these areas of interest that we have, half of their allocation. And that got me to 311,000, at least 311,000 as a, as a number. So that was my, like I said, my first stab at this. Mayor?
I think we need to find out if the township can really afford to do the $100,000 because they're going to get hit because they're totally property tax. Carol Elliott warned about that and I think we need to talk with Michelle Mayall, the new supervisor.
But we have.
Find out what, what we really can expect from the township.
We can do that. I'll have Janelle. We will contact Cunningham Township the next, you know, tomorrow, next day and find out what their budget actual amount is. And then we can send an email and let all of you know.
Okay. The other thing too is, given what's happened, remember, we always, we always have the possibility of having a special budget meeting for the township. I believe that's scheduled, what, for the fourth meeting of the month? Yeah, I think that's what, I think there's a default time in there if we want to have one. You know, we get those cancellation notices of it on a regular basis. So if there's interest in doing one of those to specifically look at the budget of the township in a more careful way or to review it with Michelle, we need to let the clerk know. Anything else? Okay, well, then we have a June 1 deadline and it's not going to be easy. Seeing no further business, we're adjourned.